Let's call this meeting to order Wednesday 22. Please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That roll call, please.
Lehman? Roll call. Millies?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Commissioner Launer is absent. Stoll?
Here.
And Aguilar is absent today, and he did advise us he would be absent.
In Alemann.
Alemann. Here.
Here. Good morning. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times or soon thereafter. As the matter can be heard, all timed, non-timed items will be considered following the public hearings or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who have made a political contribution of more than $500 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn off or place your phones in alert mode. In compliance with the American Disability, with Disabilities Act, if you need special assistance to participate in the meeting, please contact the Resource Management Agency at 559-624-7000. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. At this time, I will open it for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? That being none, I will close the public comment period. We will move on to the consent calendar. Action items in this section will be taken with one motion and vote unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requested that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over for such discussion. The consent calendar is an untimed item and may be taken up at any time during the course of today's meeting as today, the time allows. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Wayne Millies, I'll make a motion to approve a two-year extension of time for EOT 25-011 to September 12, 2027, for the final site plan on PSR 18-003 for an agricultural service establishment and amendment to special use permit PSP 00-049ZA on a seven-acre portion of a 28.86-acre property located in the M1SR Zone on the northeast corner of Road 152 and County Line, road north of Delano.
Bill Whitlatch, I'll second that.
First and a second, please vote.
Motion passes 6-0 with one absent.
Motion passes. My screen stuck? Hmm? That is my screen stuck? There it goes. Okay. Public hearing, to the members of the public who wish to participate, you may do so at the time the public comment portion of this hearing is open. At this time, please state your name and address for the record in order for it to be heard by everyone in the room. Your statements will go out on live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the hearing. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. We'll go on to item A, special use permit PSP 25-045, Roxanna Bran.
Good morning, Chairman Alemann and Commissioners. My name is Roxanna Bran.
I want to bring the mic, the mic a little closer to yourself. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Roxanna Bran, and I work for the Resource Management Agency, Planning Department. Before you today, we are requesting one motion to approve a special use permit PSP 25-045 for a contractor's storage yard. This is the vicinity map. The property is located at 23205 Avenue 192 at Strathmore, APN number 243050001. The applicant is Steve Alvarado, property owner Jose Miguel Alvarado. These are the aerial and zoning maps. The site is located within the Strathmore Urban Development Boundary with the land use designation of low median density residential. It is 1.7 acres in size and contains one residence, one septic system, a domestic well, a garage, and a shared structure. The property zone are A43, rural residential, 43,000 square feet minimum, and the surrounding properties are A43, AE20 zone, and contain the Frey and Care Canal residences and agriculture. This is the site plan. The proposed facility is intended to serve as a secure storage location for a family, for a family-operated transportation business. The site includes designated parking for three semi-trucks, seven trailers, and one pickup truck. Operations are proposed to take place five days per week, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting flexibility for agricultural seasonal instances, where they leave and return earlier or later than the requested hours. For truck washing and minor maintenance, he's requesting occasional weekends. The area zone allows the contractor's storage yard subject to approval of a special use permit. As such, the facility must comply with the regulations outlined in Section 15810 of the Tulare County Ordinance pertaining to contractors' storage yards. There are no current violations in the property. However, a citizen request was submitted to the county letting us know that semi-trucks were being stored on the property. The applicant was not aware of the special use required for the use, and the purpose of this, the purpose of this project is to bring the property into compliance. A public notice was mailed to the surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sangha Set with a 10-day public comment period. Staff has received videos, pictures, and two letters. One of the letters signed by several neighbors expressing concerns and opposing to the project. One of the concerns is that multiple trucks have been stored on the property and that over the past years, the facility has expanded beyond the scope indicated in the proposed project. The operations and truck maintenance are at all hours, the noise caused by the trucks entering and exiting the property, trucks running during nighttime, and the bright LED lighting on the site. Another comment is that flooding is occurring as a result of the runoff caused by recent regrading and installation of gravel on the property. The semi-trucks and equipment are being washed on site and led to oil, fuel, and other contaminants being discharged with the runoff and carried to the neighbors, especially during rainfall. These pictures have been provided by the applicant. This is the way the site looks right now, and he has, he has expressed his willingness to comply with the regulations for the proposed use. He is requesting the facility to be able to accommodate semi-trucks, only three, seven trailers, and one pickup truck. The number of vehicles permitted on the site will be limited to what is permissible by the special use permit. The request for the operations are to be five days a week, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., with the flexibility that he is requesting on occasional weekends. This will limit the business hours allowed on the site while allowing flexibility for the agricultural-related portion of the business. The applicant has indicated the lighting is solar-powered LED with motion sensors. They remain dim under normal conditions and only increase in brightness when motion is detected. Since being notified of the issue, the applicant has provided pictures showing that the lights have been adjusted downward to minimize light spills and reduce impact on neighboring properties. To mitigate the concerns regarding the flooding, runoff, and pulling in the property, Mr. Alvarado will be regrading and additional gravel will be placed in the property to improve drainage directing stormwater towards designated areas within the property to prevent flooding and runoff onto the neighbor's property. Mr. Alvarado has always stated that he is willing to follow any recommendations provided by the Planning Commission to comply with the regulations for the proposed use. This ends the staff report. Do you have any questions for the staff or the applicant?
Through the chair. How long have they been in business at this location?
He bought the property in 2022.
So three, three years?
Three years, yes.
Has any of our staff actually been out there at nighttime to observe the lighting?
No, we have not been at nighttime. He just provided pictures showing us that he has dim a little bit.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. I will open it now for public comment period. And does anybody from the public want to speak on this matter? Yes, that microphone, and please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Juan Ayala. I am the actual neighbor. My name, address is 23.
Bring the mic closer to you.
My address is 2323191 Avenue 192, which is next door. So I'm the one that's taking the big hit. Some other concerns that I got is just like the environmental, the aesthetics, the noise, not respecting the time of operations. They're out there till nine o'clock. They've got compressors going, generators, power washers, and then their semi-trucks, they got the reefers that are operating, and those are operating at night. And from my research, those are like between 80 to 90 decibels, 96 decibels, and those are operating all night long. They arrive like between pretty much all the mornings. They don't have an exact schedule. One o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock in the mornings. They leave in the mornings. They turn their trucks on, leave them on a good 15 minutes. They pound on the wheels, and that's actually created us from our sleeping cycle. We come home from work. First thing we see is that, the noise, and people are out there. And it's, to me, it's not just them business. I see other trucking companies coming, and they drop off their trailer, pick up a trailer, and they leave. So their operations are different hours. My concern is also water runoff. There's a lot of water runoff that goes into my property. Some of the photos there, just this last week that we had a winning train. There's a lot of spaces that the water runoff is coming into my property. Think that's pretty much it. As far as street damages, that's kind of like some of my other concerns there. We're on a well. They're doing truck maintenance, changing tires, maintenance, oil changes, fluids, whatnot. I don't see specifically what they do. I'm not there all the time. And I would like to drive home from work and have a nice, peaceful, quiet place.
You live next door.
What's that?
You live next door.
I'm the next door. Their trucks are about 120 feet away from my, my house. So if I'm in there watching TV, those things are just running, and it's like having a helicopter over your, your truck or your house. I'm kind of concerned also. One other thing is insurance, theft, vandalism. There's, from what I see, there is, I don't know, maybe up to six or more cameras. I'm sure they have concerns of that, too. I have that concern as far as safety, insurance. I don't know if it's gonna increase my insurance having that next door. So those are some of my major concerns.
Any questions? Yes.
Several of the photographs that we've been sent and just been given recently, we just got a lot of them. Show runoff. Is it running off on your property?
Oh, it floods.
The property is crossing the property line and coming onto your.
Oh, yeah. I don't know. I, I don't know. There's videos there. I don't know if you guys were able to see the videos. There's videos there of even the noise of the trucks. Because I'm, like I said, I'm about 150 feet away, and I can hear, I mean, you can hear probably a quarter mile, I can hear them things. So, but it, it does, it floods. My well is about, about 150 feet away. So my concern is, you know, contaminating my.
It also indicates that there, there are reefer trailers parked there, and they run all night?
Yes. Day and night.
They have, yeah.
Yes. There's video of that, too.
Not every night?
Not every night. But the trucks, like I said, they do go on and off, and there's no consistency as far as when they're gonna drop off, leave, and then.
That's that schedule.
No. Weekends are major weekends. Well, that's when they do most of their repairs. Like I said, compressors are always going on and off, pretty loud.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to speak? Please state your name and address. Speak into the mic, please.
My name's Steve Alvarado. I live on 23205 Avenue 192. I'm actually the one requesting the special use permit. And whatever I can remedy the problems, what he has, I'll do so. So whatever you guys decide, I'm willing to comply.
Have you seen the conditions of the use permit?
Well, not yet.
County has prepared some conditions for you, and have you gone over the conditions of the use permit that, that have been given to you?
The ones that were stated, yes, the conditions.
I have mentioned the hours of operations, and you know, he's requesting flexibility on seasonal occasions besides, you know, the Monday through Friday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then regarding the flooding, I have talked to him about it and mentioned their concerns, and he has stated that he's willing to add more gravel or more grading into the property to, to avoid that or mitigate that issue.
Thank you.
He's asking for the seasonal hours. What hour spans is he looking at?
Steve?
Mornings, 5:00 a.m., leave. Returning, 10:00, 9-ish.
When you say leave, do you mean, do you turn the trucks on at 5:00 a.m.? Or you turn them on earlier?
No, at 5:00 a.m., we will turn them on, do a 15-minute pre-trip inspection, which is required federally. Then we will leave.
Have you considered putting a pondie basin on and regrading your lot so it all drains in rather than out?
Is that for the flooding?
Yes.
Whatever fixes a problem, I'm willing to do, so.
And those lights, I, I love those lights. I use them. I'm a, I do industrial property management. At least I did until two weeks ago. But those, those lights are bright, and they're really great. Is there any way to redirect them so they just shine down?
Yeah, they're, we could adjust them. And all the lights, they're facing my property, my, towards my house. And no way are they facing his house at all.
But they, they tend to do 180 degrees no matter which way you face them. But they're, they're good. I mean, you know, it's solar-powered and bright. Really nice for, for an industrial site. So I'm just saying, is, is, any way to just direct it just directly to your area so that, but the light doesn't go out to your neighbor's property?
Yeah, I could adjust them.
A question. Your, one of your neighbors alluded to you running the refrigerated trailers 24 hours. Have you, or do you intend to run those at any time for 24 hours?
No, because most of my work, they're transfers for the packing houses, local packing houses. All the Sunkist-associated packing houses, we do their transfers. We never bring back the product. Only during, we'll call it a pair season, where we bring pairs from Clear Lake down to Exeter. And sometimes we take them down to Colton. I'll come by maybe an hour or two with the reefer on, and then I have to leave to deliver, so.
So I'm, I understand that oftentimes with these trucking operations, they have to pre-chill the box, which means that you gotta leave it on. So I.
Yes.
If you are gonna do that, and they're alleging you're doing that, I definitely recommend you, you're clear with that. Everything being upfront is better than having this cycle back and then creating, creating churn. So if there's any possibility you're gonna do that, disclosing that upfront is always better.
Okay, to pre-chill it.
If you're gonna be running it all night long, and they're gonna, people are gonna, you know, I would say, make sure you let people know that here at the planning. And then the flooding, I don't know if you started, you acquired the property and you started immediately? Just wondering if the flooding is any more or less than it was previously? If you've graded and put gravel in and done anything to the property, has it made it worse? Is, is the water now traveling off the property as opposed to flooding and then draining?
When I got there, the flooding was bad. When I put gravel, all the flooding went towards the east side, where my dogs are at. I'm not sure how his is flooding because we've, those pictures were taken when the rain was really bad, like it was raining for days.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No other questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else from the public like to speak?
I don't speak a real good English, but my name is Javier Ayala Gonzalez. I live in the front to, to this place when the, the trucks parking. And I have a 45 years live over there. Never, you have a problems over there. Okay, I live in front to the, when the trucks go. And I don't know if these people got permit or not. When the trucks go, I put it on a big door, little bit noise, little bit left side. And when the trucks leaving, the lights, it go straight to my house and the next house. This two houses mine. Okay, the next house I rent. The people rent this house. He told me, Javier, you got a lot of problems with these trucks, too much traffic, I need to go to other place. When the truck has turn a left, it go when my friends put it close to the fence, you know, turn a left. So the other thing is, in the corner to the Row 232, I live in Row 232 and 192. Okay, and, and Row 232, all the time, the buses, the school bus, it parking right here, leaving kids, picking up kids, one, two times, three a day. And the truck is working 24 hours a day. I'm not a sleeper good, you know why? For too much traffic and containers, motors, and the truck's motors, and I don't know what happened. And I don't know if these people got permit for fixing these doors exactly when, when the doors are having now. I don't know. This is my opinion. Thank you. Not speaking too good English, but well, I'm sorry.
Which, which home are you, sir? Which home are you on this map?
My, my home? It's 23210 Avenue 192.
Where does it show up?
And the other one.
He's not gonna know.
No, he won't know unless he sees the map.
That is its side? Yeah, in front. His property is across the street from the.
Across the street?
Yes, across the street. No, next door neighbor, it's across the street.
Which one?
I don't know.
That's what I'm asking.
I'm not sure which one, so I just know it's across the street.
Which house is yours up there? Cuál es el tuyo?
¿Qué tan lejos está de la propiedad donde está el negocio?
Do you have the site plan?
Well, he said the headlights shine under his house. It must be the one behind it.
Yeah, it's across the street.
One of my houses, front across the street. This is 23210 when the man lived. The next house is 23206 in a corner to Row 232 and Avenue 192. These two houses.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Kathy Cardona. I'm here representing my father, Jorge Cardona. He is the other truck driver that parks his truck with Steve Alvarado on the property. I just came by today to let you guys know the things he wanted me to point out in regards to the business is that we do not do any mechanic work on the property. All mechanic work is done at another shop unless it's part of the pre-trip inspection. The other thing is that the reefers are not turned on like Steve iterated earlier. They're not turned on all night. We do transfer work. Transfer, transfer work entails basically that we move the fruit from one packing house to another. to another and we never take product back home. If they do do the pre-cooling, like Matthew Stole mentioned earlier, it's done on, on the road itself. So they'll turn on the reefer, get on the road. They do during the pair season, a seven-hour trip. So that's sufficient time to pre-cool on the way to the packing house that they're doing the work to. The other thing is when we wash the trucks, we're not really washing the trucks. We do, do like the window cleaning, which is also part of the fifteen-minute pre-check, pre-trip inspection. Again, that's federally required and required for safety. So, and then when we are washing the windows, it isn't, it's not like a, a large amount of water. It's solely just to clean the side windows, the front windows. And then usually we're using a pre, a pressure washer to do it, so it's not a whole lot of water runoff. And that's the only thing I wanted to point out to you guys.
If it's barely any water, how do you explain the runoff?
I don't know when those pictures were taken because it looks like it was taken after the rain. Like I said, we do not wash the trucks at that property and we have receipts to prove it that we actually wash them in Traver, at a truck wash there or in Fresno. Like I said, all the washing that is done, it's small amounts of water through a pressure washer and it's to ensure safety, again.
Are you saying that you do no, no tune-ups or any type of oil changes?
The only thing that we do do in terms of repairs is in case something is not compliant with our fifteen-minute pre-trip, pre-trip inspection. We do do tune-ups, but again, it's not like something major, like we're taking out the whole motor or changing large parts or taking out oils, things like that. It's only to ensure that the truck is safe enough to be on the road and what is required by the highway patrol.
And you might have addressed this already, a couple of other people have, the hours of operation.
The hours of operation, like Steve mentioned during the pair, they are not here at all during the day for the pair season, except when he comes back. So they do the trip to Findlay, California, that's seven hours from here. Then they stop in Exeter, California, fifteen minutes from here. And then he goes home for about an hour or two, prepare for his trip and then goes to Colton and then he returns right back to Findlay. So they're hardly there. And then during the off-season, that, I want to say it's from July, June, July until November, December. So they're only there, honestly, Saturday evening from five until Sunday next day at three, and then they go right back to work.
How do you explain then the, 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 the comments that were made about it being, the trucks being on twenty-four hours?
I think those are all false statements because like I said, we don't take any of the produce home unless Steve is doing one of those trips to Colton. And again, he's only there for an hour or two when he does. But we can show proof of, of that as well with the bill of lading, where we do the transfers to and from packing houses. And we, like I said, we pick up from one packing house to another and then we leave the fruit and that's it. We go home, the reefers are empty, there's no reason for us to have the reefers on at those times that they're mentioning. And like I said, we have proof with those bills of lading if those need to be shown.
Any questions? Thank you very much. You have anyone else that would like to speak on something new regarding this matter?
Good morning. My name is Elba Ayala and I'm, I live on two three one nine one Avenue one ninety-two. I'm the next door neighbor and I'm just wanna say that that freezer stays on for a long time, sometimes most of the night. And I know the person that just spoke, she doesn't live there. I live next door. And the noise, it's like this past Saturday, they got there like around one-thirty in the morning and they left like around five in the morning. I live there, I know, I, they wake us up all the time. And like I said, the freezer, it's on some nights, I'm not gonna say every, every night, but some nights it's on all night. And the water that runs to our property is because they put, I think it's called DG, with the compact stuff and then the gravel. So the water doesn't have enough room to go down like fat, so that's why it goes to a property. That's why we have all those pictures. And for me, the most concern is the noise going in and out at who knows what time in the morning, nights. And it's just, it's been, it's been rough living there. And we lived there for twenty, twenty years. And this past three years, it's been rough on us. Just want you guys to just take a moment and picture yourselves living there and just.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
So this matter came to our attention through a complaint?
To a citizen request, yes.
And how long ago did that occur, the complaint?
Well, the complaint was submitted at the beginning of the year to us and then the applicant submitted the PRC to try to comply with the regulations. He was not aware of the, of the special use permit being required for the use.
So you're saying like January, we received the complaint or February?
No, it was, it was at the beginning, probably February, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The day, the exact day, sorry.
And it took us eight months to start the process?
Project, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'd like to call our code enforcement officer forward. If that's okay with the chair? Can you state your name for the record?
Absolutely. Good morning. Hector Ramos, building official with the county, oversee code enforcement. This, this complaint came to our office in December of two thousand and twenty-four for a contractor storage yard. We did inspect the site in December and the inspector made contact with the property owner, advised him of, of the potential violation. Been in constant communication with the property owner in regards to the complaint. No case was actually ever opened. But in doing some research before this planning commission meeting here today, there are some additional items that I would like to go out and investigate in regards to unpermitted structures and, and structures being used for potential mechanic works or whatnot. So we will be going out here in the near future to go do another investigation of the property to address all these concerns.
Through the chair, while you're also going out and investigating some of the mobile vending machines, could you swing by and check out the lighting at this location at night?
Absolutely. Just make a list of, I mean, I made a list of the concerns, the lighting, the noise, the runoff and whatnot. And we'll provide a summary of the, of our findings on the next inspection.
Good deal. I think that'd be good.
Should continue.
Yep. Going to, based on that, thank you, sir. Based on that, I think I'll close the, unless somebody else has something else, I'm gonna close the public comment period. I would refer this back to staff for further study. And an upcoming report?
Agreed.
We need, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
We, yeah, we should have a motion, actually, just as.
I need a motion for that.
We have a resolution.
The time certain?
Let's not do date certain at this point. Yeah, we, we don't, we'll re, republish the hearing notice and, and come back to you.
Okay. I need a motion, gentlemen, ladies?
A date uncertain.
Commissioner Lehman, I'd like to make a motion to recer, refer this back to staff for further study, develop some mitigating measures for some of the complaints that we have heard here and do them in conjunction with some of the neighbors and also with the applicant.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
All right, we have a first and a second, please vote.
We have motion by Lehman, second by Millie's. It's six, zero vote, motion is passed to, what is it, continue, date uncertain.
Aaron, I have a question on this. Since this is a work in process, does it make any sense to give all the homes that are red dotted on this map, a copy of the conditions of approval or we do that later? So we know exactly what everybody's agreed to do?
Through the chair, that information is available to the public generally if they wanted to get it, but we can give those conditions to them directly.
Some people may not have the.
Yes. We, we'll, we'll make sure they receive copies of the agenda item.
That we're all on the same page in terms of what's being approved.
And I'd also like to direct the engineering department to put a condition in there that they typically put in there regarding drainage and off-site drainage, especially given this Strathmore area might be in Zone X. It is a known flooding area that we are, we are all aware of.
Thank you.
Also provide those in Spanish.
Yes, we'll translate all of the agenda items. Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Roxanna.
Thank you.
He's having fun outside.
Oh, boy.
All right, let's move on to item B, special use permit number PSP two-five-zero-six-six. And we had Niboy, Niboy Inc.
Never you.
Sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Why don't you continue? Why don't you continue?
Yeah, I didn't hear the continuing.
Good morning, Chair Aliman and commissioners. I am Naby Umenker, project planner in the county project processing division. Before you this morning is a categorical exemption and conditional approval of specialist permit number PSP twenty-five dash zero sixty-six requested by property owner Justin Devon. Address one-six-seven-three for Avenue one-eighty-eight Strathmore, California, zip code nine-three-two-six-seven to allow an agricultural service establishment for the storage of agricultural equipment, tractors, tree toppers, brush shredders, brush racks, trucks and semi-trucks, semi-trucks on a five-point-four acre parcel property located in the AE twenty or exclusive agricultural twenty-acre minimum zone. This is a vicinity map. The parcel is within the rural valley lands plan with the land use designation of valley agricultural. The subject site is located at one-eight-four-four-one-one, Road two-thirty-two, Porterville, on the northwest corner of Avenue one-eighty-four and Road two-thirty-two, bordering State Highway sixty-five on parcel number APN two-four-three-dash-zero-four-zero-dash-zero-four-two. These are the area and existing zoning maps. The applicants requested to add, to demolish, to remove two forty-eight by sixty pole barn located on the site and proposed eight-hundred, eight thousand square feet enclosed metal building, four thousand square feet enclosed and four thousand square feet open bay for storing agricultural equipment. The site also contains one-forty-five by sixty-two square feet shop building and five horsepower domestic well. The surrounding properties are zoned AE twenty and AE exclusive agricultural zone and contains farming land and scattered rural residences. Consultation was sent to the Tulare County Environmental Health Service Division, Public Works Engineering Division, Fire Department, Building Department and Code Enforcement. Their replies are attached with a condition of approvals. This is a site plan. Previous history about the parcel include a code violation case GC twenty-zero-zero-one-eighty-four for interior remodel work done without a building permit for the metal shop. I think this is done by the previous property owner. This code violation is closed on September two, twenty-twenty-five. We receive a two demolition permit for two pole barns. Also, previously I mentioned the eight thousand square feet metal new structure. The subject parcel is not under a Williamson Act and land conservation contract. Entitlement for this property is agricultural services establishment primarily engaged in performing agricultural animal husbandry service or horticulture service to farmers and service to farmers or farmer, farm-related activities in planting, harvesting, storage, hauling and equipment repair and maintenance are allowed in the AE twenty zone after approved by the planning commission specialist permit. This is a site condition taken from Google image. The applicant proposed to use the property to park tractors, trucks, five semi-trucks, tree toppers and hedgers, brush shredders and brush racks. Proposed days of operations are six days in a week, Monday to Saturday, from seven A. M. to six P. M. Parking, none are allowed for the public as the site will not be open to the public. But adequate parking is provided for employees and deliveries. Parking on the street for business purposes prohibited. There will be employees, five employees per day on the site and twenty, twenty other employees on the job site. No sign are allowed in this parcel. The proposed area of usage is a whole five-point-four acre property. And access for the traffic is the subject parcel has direct access to Avenue one-eighty-four and Road two-thirty-two. For traffic, there is an estimated twenty trips per day between the hours of operation seven A. M. to six P. M. Arrival. This is a hearing notification map. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in Exeter Saint Gazeta with a ten-day public comment period before today planning commissions. We have not received any inquiries of project. This is staff reports. If you have any question, I can answer and the applicant is also here.
Through the chair, I did receive a phone call from Leonard Hanson regarding this and he had requested that there's some other trucking businesses in the area and they're doing damage to two-seventy-two and one-eighty-four right at the intersection, although the, the pictures we just saw do show the roadway as being nice. The suggestion is that there, that we create some sort of fee to have the owner help pay for the damage immediately in front of their properties. We have done that in the past, usually with the larger mining facilities and Dunn's business, which of course creates a lot of traffic. So the, the suggestion, although not necessarily backed by evidence or supported by the record, would still be within your power to designate some kind of fee to help pay, at least for the immediate impacts from this project. So on two-seventy-two and one-eighty-four as their trucks at twenty trips a day would generate. You could have staff. We do have, like I said, we do have fees, so we do have methods to figure out per axle how much the impact is to the immediate roadway if we so choose to go down that road. So if we choose to, to do this. But again, that's just the only comment I received on this, on this project.
And the damages to the state highway or to the first road to the east?
So first road to the east, two-seventy-two. And then they talked about, and I, it would be really hard to, on one-eighty-four itself to kind of single this project out for any impacts to that roadway. But generally that, that it would be an annual fee that would just go into our roads department to help. annual fee that would just go into our roads department to help pay for, for future improvements.
Do you mean 232?
232, yeah. I thought I heard 272 earlier, 232.
For a four-way stop or signal intersection?
What was that? Sorry, Commissioner.
Any chance there might be a, for a signaled intersection or stop signs, four-way?
So we could also look into that. Of course, that requires a study unto itself, an algorithmic study to get warrants for those types of improvements. Again, stop signs and traffic signals cause accidents, so the cost benefit ratio of how many accidents we're going to cause by putting it in there versus how many accidents are already there. It's a pretty in-depth study. We could all, you could also direct staff to look at that and see if this project needs to support the cost of the signal itself. And if that's the case, I would suggest we bring this project back to you. But the fees would be easy enough for us to generate for this project if you direct us to do so, but a traffic study is more of a SEQA matter. We'd have to go back and look at our SEQA on this project, but at 20 trips a day, that does not go over the threshold. Our general plan calls for 50 or 100 trips, but 50 if there's a state route that's impacted. So we don't, we're half, under half that threshold, so there's no real reason for a traffic study or for this project to be solely beholden to an intersection improvement. But we can, we can look at that. That was also part of the comment that Mr. Hanson had made was that there is quite a bit of traffic coming along 184 there, so. But again, at 20 trips, it's...
It's a short distance to the state highway, but...
Yeah.
Anyway, some kind of traffic calming devices would be nice, so.
So on the motion, if it does go forward with the motion, just with the comment of...
To, yeah, so the fee.
For staff to establish?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open this to the public comment period and anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter. That being known, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to quite many further questions for staff. None, thank you, sir.
Yep.
And now I need a motion. We're a denial.
Wayne Millies, I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 25-066 and...
With fees?
With fees.
Added by the staff?
With fees added by the staff.
Where the road?
For what?
The road improvements.
The road improvements, okay.
Greg.
Can we change the...
Let's go back to, let's go back to move.
Yeah, reset that. Mr. Lehman, will you hit that again? There we go, can we vote, please? Alrighty, motion passes, six yeses, one absent.
Thank you.
Zero nos. Go to item C, special use permit number PSP 25-076. And we have Russell.
You need to address them together? Yeah, that's what I would do.
Are you going to address both C and D together or are we going to do one at a time?
Okay.
Through the chair, it's the same for D.
Yes.
So you will try to approve them both at once.
Yes, so the only difference would be the site location. I believe the site location is located, 76 is located to the west of Project 77, so they're in a fairly close location. That would be the only difference. So, good morning Chairman Aliman, fellow commissioners. My name is Rosokashua, I'm project planner with Tulare County RMA Project Processing Division. Before you this morning is PSP number PSP 25-076 and 077 to allow for a 30,000 gallon propane tank and gas line. This will be used to service wind machines for frost protection. This is the vicinity map for PSP 25-076. Project site is located on the east side of the intersection of Avenue 356 and Road 160 north of Ivanhoe. APN numbers are 052-090002, 052-100008, 152-100009 for efficiency. Then the PSP 25-077, that one is located on the east side of Road 172 and bisected by Avenue 360 north of Ivanhoe. APN numbers for that one, 053-140024, 153-140025, 027, 028, and 053-130005. These are the existing aerial and zoning maps. Property is located in the AE 20 Exclusive Agricultural 20 acre minimum zone. Entitlement is found in Section 16, Part 2B of the Tulare County zoning ordinance. Flammable liquids stored above ground, a special use permit shall not be required to locate on a property with an aggregate capacity of 1,000 gallons or smaller for personal ag use. So as these tanks are 30,000 gallons inside and larger than the 10,000, a special use permit is required. This is the proposed site plan. Again, this is for PSP 25-076. As previously mentioned, the request is to allow for a 30,000 gallon propane tank and gas line. This will be used to service wind machines for frost protection. A public notice for this project was mailed to the surrounding properties and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with a 10-day public comment period before today's planning commission. Consultation notices were also sent out to Tulare County Fire, Public Works, and Environmental Health Department. As of today, there is no comments received for this project or for the other project, PSP 25-077 as well. And that concludes staff report. If you have any questions for staff?
Questions for staff? Thank you, Russell. At this point, I'd like to open this comment, the public comment period. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter, please come on up. That being known, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission.
I will make a motion to approve category exemption, Matthew Stoll, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 24 Cal Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit numbers PSP 25-076 and 25-077.
First and second, everyone vote. Motion passes with six yeses and one absent, and in this particular case, we put both motions on that.
Thank you.
All right. Item E, tentative subdivision map number TSM 25-002. And we have David.
Good morning, thank you Chairman Aliman, Commissioners. Before you right now is tentative subdivision map number TSM 25-002. This is for minor revisions to tentative subdivision map number 791, located in the RA 12.5 Rural Residential 12 and a half thousand square foot minimum zone on two APNs totaling approximately 9.58 acres, located on the north side of Road 33 and State Route 201, Kingsburg, within the Kingsburg Rivers Plan with a land use designation of Rural Residential/Recreation. This here is the vicinity map. These here are the aerial and existing zoning maps. So the crux of this matter to ask for these minor revisions, the conditions of approval to TSM 791 is that a revised map has been submitted. This is the original map approved almost 20 years ago for 24 single-family residential lots, and the new map has reduced it by 60% down to eight single-family residential lots. So a lot of the conditions of approval no longer apply due to the significant reduction in density, such as a handful of... Sorry. So we do the minor revisions, replacing the passwording of the 24 lots into eight lots in several sections of the tentative subdivision map. And you can see the overall density goes from 2.4 units per gross acre to 0.8 units per gross acre. The sewer and water changes as well, going to individual septics and individual wells. The same with the, the change in the storm drainage basin. Now what's proposed is that each parcel will contain their own stormwater runoff on site. And then there was a handful, without reading all of them, these are all just go to the reduction in density, a handful of roads and engineering, health human services and fire department, conditions of approval. Consultation was sent to all of these departments again to review if removing these conditions of approval, if there, if there would be an issue to remove them considering that they're going from 24 units down to eight, and I received no comments from the various departments. A public, sorry. Public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Exeter Sun Gazette with the 10-day public comment period before today's planning commission. I did, I was contacted by one neighbor, we spoke. He also sent me an email with a PDF attachment that should have been all passed out to you now, basically against the overall project. We had some conversation about how the, the initial project has been approved. 721, TSM 791 was approved in 2007. This is a reduction in, in density. Generally, besides concerns of water and traffic, it was, I moved out to the country, I like it, there's less people, and I explained how this would be preferable to what's already approved from going from 24 units down to eight. With that said, this ends staff report. Do you have any questions for myself or the applicant?
Any questions for staff?
Reduction.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot less trouble. At this time, I would open the matter to the public for any public comment. If anybody from the public would like to speak, please come on up. Please state your name and address and speak in the microphone.
Hi, my name is Blake Dodd. I'm the person that submitted the letter, the neighbor at 3322 Avenue 400. So I mean, I don't know if you guys have had time to read what I wrote, but biggest concerns are groundwater, being that these are all individual wells now. My well has dropped 20 feet in 10 years, so with eight wells in that dense of an area, I'm concerned with water. Then the other issue is I don't, there's really no clarity with this project on property lines setbacks. I just, I'm kind of in the dark on what this looks like for us. Septic systems, wells, making sure things are set back far enough, you know. My house is built in 1903. It's an old house, old property, so I don't even know if the county knows where my stuff is versus where a new well could be placed. I had, I had to drill a new well in '22. It's in the northeast corner of the property now, so that's a big concern. And just the duration of this project, you know, is there a barrier? How long are we going to deal with this? Is there a wall? We, you know, we just don't know what to expect. This is a pretty good sized project. Is this going to last three years, 10 years, 12 years? What are we going to endure? So we're not really fond of this subdivision. I have, I have gone around to all the neighboring neighbors and they all signed a petition that's basically everyone boarding around. They're all in opposition, feel the same way I do. I don't have that on me, I can submit if you guys would like to see that. It's just really, you know, that 400 is a very busy road. There's a lot of accidents as people cross over the golf course, and we've almost been clobbered out of our driveway with reckless driving, and so with the added traffic at 32 and 400, that's going to, you know, rear its ugly head at some point. So, I mean, the statement I wrote pretty much sums up how we feel and all the concerns and, and whatnot. We've been there 11 years. This thing's been lingering, don't know really all the details. We put a fence in. Tom Moser, Senior, we had discussion about property lines and where to put the fence, and he told me to put it on the property line, so I did. And so I don't know what this looks like for us. We have a side driveway to the, the west side driveway, our property line. It, it's going to narrow off our side driveway if you follow the line. I don't know what that looks like for us, if we're still going to have access to that because we have a main entrance and a side entrance. So there's just no transparency with the homeowner or the owners on really what this looks like for us. So there's a lot of concerns because it will affect us some way, shape, or form in the future, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions for the applicant?
I have one question.
For the labor?
I have one question, please.
Yes.
Is this in a subsidence area? He said his well had dropped by 20 feet. Is it in a subsidence zone?
I have no knowledge of that.
That would be a significant impact if it was...
This, anything is possible, but like I said, it's servicing, water servicing eight units compared to 24, which is approved to develop. If that is a concern, this would be preferable to go from 24 units down to eight.
Yeah, it'd be a significant loss of money.
Although it probably fluctuates quite a bit on any given year, especially drought years, would definitely not have as much subsidence as say the southeast corner of the county.
You know, those red lines you see on the map, those are done aerial from up above, and they're not necessarily where the real property lines are. So if there was a survey, those markers define exactly where the property lines are, so.
It's, it was done by BLS land surveying this new map, so...
I'm talking about the...
That, yeah, the aerial map is...
That means nothing, really.
Correct.
But also through the chair, when the final maps are done, there will be record surveys on this, so they'll know exactly where those lines are.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? That being known, I'll close the public comment period. I'll bring it back to commission. Are there any further questions for staff? Any conversation? Needs either a motion or denial. Got to hit the button first. They need a motion.
Okay. Bill, will I try to make a motion to approve, subject to modifications that discussed by the planning commission, for TSM 25-002 tentative subdivision map?
First and second, please vote.
Could I ask the staff to just kind of explain that the wells and septic and all that, some of it has to be engineered, and you take in consideration all of the things that the gentleman that was against it talked about, correct?
Yes, so just a quick explanation, and we'll talk to the commenter more so after this meeting. But generally, and it's explained in, from the environmental health's letter in the record about the, our lamp program limits it to one septic per acre, and that's through an agreement with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, that all septic in this county is engineered. Back in the day, a contractor used to be able to size them and roll them onto the property, and that was good enough, but now they're engineered at quite a, quite an expense, $15,000 to $20,000 per. And then there's also other limitations as far as the setback distances that are in the lamp, basically 150 feet from another water source for the septic. And then there's also setback requirements within our plumbing code as far as property lines and where the... So you get this really, in these situations, these really tight backyards where the well's located versus where the septic's located. You also have to have, for the leach field, a replacement area, entire replacement area, so the backyards can't get squeezed down too much, and also thinking about all the setback requirements. So these are very, very much engineered processes that do get approved by our Environmental Health Department as they go through that process. So, and on top of that, the Environmental Health Department gets kind of two bites at the apple here. First, these are the application for the septic permit. That usually starts off the process, and then also, environmental health will also look at the overall building permits as they go through the process, so nothing gets missed. And so that, in a nutshell, kind of sums it up, but...
Thank you.
This is agreed to and delegated authority from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, so we're in line with the state water laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When I never said it, the motion did pass. We move on to the director's report.
Larry County. Again, just for the record, I will not be attending the planning commissioners' conference this weekend. I've given my ticket to Ross here, so I forfeited it so Ross could go. And...
So generous.
All right. What else can I do for you, Ross? So as far as the report, not too much going on. We are getting to the verge of, at the end of the calendar year, starting to look at numbers. You know, last few weeks, there's been a little bit of a dip in the building permits, nothing substantial. We kind of look at that as a reprieve, to look at our processes even closer and try to figure out better ways to do things. We're on the verge of having all of our planning permits go through a portal within, similar to building permits, and that's going to come up here pretty quickly. I'd say within the next month. It's in test right now. So once that happens, we are going to be even more less likely to accept paper permits. We've been nice, giving exceptions. The city of Visalia is not so nice as far as they will not accept paper, and we're definitely heading in that, in that direction, just because the inefficiencies that paper caused once we're totally digital. So that's going to happen in fairly short order here. Also, I believe around the beginning of November, we have a new software program called GoGov that we're going to initiate, and so this will be a reporting tool, a CRM tool, so people will be able to report potholes, code violations, et cetera. And it's well-used by other municipalities, counties throughout the state and outside of the state. We got, got in early enough with them, so the pricing's not overly expensive, and we have their full attention. So that'll be a nice tool for the public to be able to use and for us to keep track, more so for us to keep track of the complaints, locations, et cetera. So that, when that comes out, we'll probably do a little show here, beginning of November, on how that all works. So that's all I have really to report, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Any matters that the commission wants to bring up for future meetings? None? All right, when's our next meeting? That would be, when is it?
November 12.
Huh?
November 12.
November 12. See everybody then? Meeting adjourned.
Two more meetings before the end of the year, and then we get a new chair.
Difficult.
New chair, yay. It's you.
Yep.
Yeah. No getting out of it this time, Joe.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dennis.
You've been up on several of these occasions.
Go get lunch, if you want.
David Ladd is interviewed yesterday. Yesterday, with the city of Tulare. Building a facility, which he knew you, because on his resume, your one eight is...
Yeah, what's his name?
I think it's...
He said it.
I didn't recall. Hispanic guy. But two of his inspectors were in Daniel's classes. Yeah. Two of his inspectors were in Daniel's classes, and they talked about that a little bit. I guess, according to Daniel, there were a couple of questions. There were very few, only one comment question. What do you do when you do a certain foundation inspection? And then that was about it. I guess they asked him to drop the resume, so why have him outside? You know, have him written a document here. So what question? He went out and got work. He's going to be tough to beat. Well, he's been driving around. He's a college agent.
Thank you.
So, yeah, hopefully he lands something. Do they do multiple, like, interviews? They are, I think, like, seven, eight, and they were ten minute interviews. And there probably will be a second one, excuse me. Again, you can't do that. Don't know, he didn't know any of the, you can't see any of them. Have they been tested? I haven't really been able to read any of the, they're the ones that do it. Well, HRV is a different animal. Lady that was there, the one, yeah, which she was, she was... Yeah, she too was gone, right? Thinking about gone, this guy's going to be gone this weekend. All he can go to is own comforts. Well, I wish you, are you, yeah, I wish you'd told us that in advance.
You didn't really first.
I'm just going to...
I didn't even know what my limits were.
Four hours and a half. Wow, have a different priority from my mom.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Bill? Bill? I got something for you.
You can bring her to the Centennial, the board.
She doesn't know.
Who cares?
You live in...
Everything he has is in the, in the side side.
I don't know that for a fact, but I just, it was in the Exeter Sun.
Yeah. Okay.
Probably the tax department.
I just thought it was in the Exeter Sun, so I don't know what that means. I do it as a lawyer, but if you buy those tax sales, they have your...
Both kinds of... She's been on the other side.
Mentor guy, he's bringing some money into one of those.
Pretty loud, wasn't it? He's still sitting.
Yeah, he's a platform. The company. And it's like, right on... It's like, wait, one of these is a nursery? Yeah, they got the money. I was like, let's go, let's go, let's go.
Okay. Was it louder over there? Was it thunder? Was it like boom? Was it louder over there?
It was.
Because it echoed.
It was. Why, have you made it? What?